For Wednesday, December 6th at 7:00 PM. The first public hearing that was continued for Beth Longren, they had submitted a request for a continuance. So that meetings have been continued to our January meeting. And then the second public hearing was a continued hearing for Stephen Flag, case number 2023-173 Huff Road. And, yeah, or counsel?
Sure. This is a good spot to be.
Yeah, you can come right here. It's fine. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. For the record again, Ryan Falk from Ira Del Connel, 100 Front Street in Worcester. Here on behalf of the owner and petitioner, Steve Flag, who's with us tonight. Also with us in getting set up is our engineer, Kevin Quinn. So if you remember, we opened the hearing on November 1st. We heard some questions and comments from board members and residents, and we requested a continuance so that we could supply answers to some of those questions the best that we could. Last week, I submitted a memo to the board addressing some of those items. I trust that you've read it, or you've had counsel or building commissioner read it. I'm not going to read it into the record, but I just want to summarize just a couple of few points if I could.
Yep, we did get a copy, and I have it here. So it is on the record.
Right. So I'm just going to summarize a few points that were in the memo and happy to turn back to the board for additional questions you may have. So first, I just want to clarify, I mentioned it last time, but I want to clarify again. We're not seeking approval for reconstruction after a fire. That is something that is allowed by the zoning bylaw as a right. That's not what we're here for. We're here for reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming residential structure. Case law on these types of special permits, clarify that the meaning of reconstruction in the zoning act and in the bylaw is that a reconstruction can be a replacement of a single-family home on the same parcel. It doesn't have to be within the footprint, it doesn't have to just be a rebuild. It can be a reconstruction, similar to what we're doing here. Secondly, we believe this home qualifies as a residential structure, as that term is used in the zoning act and in the bylaw. Clarifying, you know, we talked last time, there was concern about the fact that this home started as a mobile home. That's our understanding as well. You know, we bought the property a few years ago. This was done decades before we came on the scene. But it was started as a mobile home, but it's since been renovated externally and internally significantly. Just wanted to describe some of the changes. Previous owners constructed a permanent roof and wall structure around the home. It's anchored to the ground with cement footings. Home has an attic with insulation, residential roof shingles, rain gutters. There's a deck that then added with cement footings. The previous owners also installed central heating. The home's interior has two-by-four constructed walls, ceilings, floors, floor area approximately nine square feet. Kitchen has, kitchen and bathrooms have standard fixtures and appliances. More importantly, regardless of how it was originally constructed, it is now a pre-existing non-conforming residential structure due to the passage of 10 years. That's a change to the zoning act a few years ago. It used to be you were immune from enforcement after a certain period of time. It's now the case, regardless whether you had an original building permit or not, you are pre-existing non-conforming after the passage of 10 years. The structure qualifies regardless of how it came to be, and it is there for residential purposes. We believe it's a residential structure that can be modified through this type of special permit. Third, we heard some questions about potential easement over Old Parker Road that's adjacent to this parcel, leads down to the pond. Nothing about this project would interfere with any easement rights, if there are. We haven't delved into that. It's not an issue that's come up since Mr. Flag has owned the property. But if there are easement rights over Old Parker Road, you know, adjacent to this property, what we're doing doesn't interfere in any way. The proposed driveway for the new home is essentially over the same spot that they're using right now to access the property in April today. It doesn't interfere with that easement if there is an easement there. If anything, relocating this home makes things better because the home that's there now currently encroaches into that area. The reconstruction would have it out of that area by six feet. And finally, we talked about this last time, but I wanted to reiterate, from our perspective, the board can easily make the required legal finding that it has to for this type of a special permit. This isn't your standard special permit. This is Section 6 finding special permit, different standard of review. And that standard is that the new proposal, the proposed home, would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. We think you can easily make that determination because this is not only not more detrimental, it's an improvement on the other end. It's actually an improvement to the property, to the neighborhood. We're removing an encroachment onto Old Parker Road, improving that setback from zero to six feet. We're minimally extending one non-conforming setback by just two feet, but that centers the home better within the property. We think it's a better layout overall. And as we said before, we think this is an improvement to the neighborhood. It's likely to improve neighboring property values. We think it's an overall asset to the town, a small project, but we think it's a significant improvement, replacing an older home that is not in the best place on the parcel with a new home that we think will be an asset. So with that, happy to take your additional questions.
Okay. Any members that have questions? If not, I can open up. One second, ma'am. I'm just going to check with the board first and then, yep, not a problem.
I actually have a couple of comments. You referred to it as a mobile home? And the challenge, I think, there is, is trying to figure out what it is. In the file for this particular thing, it shows a travel trailer or camper trailer, not a mobile home. That's what it was originally there that was, had this structure that was put over, the roof system put over, which is, I believe is still there because if you look at the pictures, the current pictures, the same configuration of the windows and the doors are still in that, in that structure. So I'm thinking that it's a camper trailer or a mobile home that's been modified. I don't know if that necessarily falls under the category of a residential structure.
I mean, through the chair, I mean, the little case law I can find on that topic was a land court case from a few years ago that found a seasonal cottage not improved anywhere near the level that this structure happens to have been approved in terms of being year-round structure, qualified as a residential structure that could be modified to, in a different location, a permanent year-round home. And so that, from that, my understanding is that whether the land court was looking at this, I think they would find that this is a residential structure. I don't dispute how it started. It's certainly unusual, but it has since been modified, and I don't think you can look at that and say that's not a residential structure that's there now. Regardless of how it got started, it's a, it's a home. It's being used as a home. It is residential, and it's been there for more than 10 years.
And your case lawyer, just as you just said, referred to a cottage. A cottage is conventional wood structure that was built. This is what, I don't believe this is what this is. I'm just telling you the challenge that I have, trying to get my head around it. So obviously, you're past the three-year point with the burned-down house, and you've addressed that because you've had a non-conforming structure there for greater than 10 years. So you're automatically allowed to keep that structure. And the difference with this here, because of what it was, and I believe it's still there underneath that, because if you look at the configuration, you look at those pictures, there's a jog to the bumpout that's on the camper trailer on one side. It's still on the structure. They kept, they kept the windows in the same spot, the jog is still in the same spot. I believe there's, there's most likely a skirting that goes around there, and if you pull the skirting off, you'd probably find a camper trailer underneath.
I don't, I don't dispute you might find the remnants of what was originally there taken through. There's substantially more around it at this point. It's not, it's not as though this is just window dressing on a camper. It has been converted into a year-round home at this point. It's not ideal construction by any stretch of the imagination. That's a part of why we're here. If it's allowed to stay there indefinitely, isn't this an improvement? Isn't this a better situation? Is that better for the property and then for the neighborhood overall?
The first question I got, I have, I need to answer myself, and I'm just speaking for myself, is, is it actually a residential structure that it's not with? Whether or not it's going to be an improvement or anything else, I think is a secondary question. That's the challenge that I have. I'm just, you're presenting your thoughts on it, and I'm just trying to give you my thoughts, and hopefully you can answer it, or maybe Steve can enlighten me a little bit.
All right. Do you want his opinion? Yeah, Steve, do you want? Do you have a comment on that?
Sure. I mean, I think, so the job that the board has, right, is make sure if certain boxes are checked, right? So they're asking for a finding that this is not substantially more detrimental. So you guys got to at least make sure they make the threshold showing that they have site control, they have site access. I think they've done that. I think counsel's addressed those preliminaries in his memo. Then there's the legal question of whether there's a distinct right to reconstruct when you have a catastrophe versus when you have a rebuild like this. Sounds like that's not a hang-up for the board. If it were a hang-up for the board, we'd need to take a look at the language in 3.4.3, 3.4.4, 3.4.5. And then there's another threshold legal question. Is this a residential structure? I think the citation, you know, I've reviewed the cases. I think the citations are accurate. You know, one procedural difference, I'm not sure that it makes a difference, but one procedural difference is, in both those cases cited, you had approvals that were given by the local board, and then those approvals were challenged by either an abbot or a neighbor, some other party in interest. And the land court, I believe it was, and ultimately the appeals court upheld those approvals. Obviously, a local board gets deference to interpretation of its own bylaw. So if this board were to deny, this board would get deference on the denial. So it's, it's not an exact apples-to-apples comparison, but, but I will say, the characterization of the case is absolutely accurate. You know, it was a cottage. I believe the case actually said it was never used as a year-round residence. The facts on the record here seem to suggest that this has been used as a year-round residence for, for quite some time. But ultimately, it's, you know, it's to the board to decide whether or not this is a residential structure. You know, I'm sure if that were to be a hang-up for the board, I would imagine there might be an appeal, and that the applicant would be arguing that the bylaw has to be read in its entirety so as to render provisions consonant with each other. So if the, if the board's going to find out that this, find that this isn't a residential structure, you need to dive into the, into the bylaw and come up with something in there that leads you to that conclusion. I don't think, I don't think it could just be kind of lock the cut knee-jerk.
Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak on this case? Sir?
My name is David Wilson, 36 Main Street, South Grafton, and 11 Huff Road, Douglas. Looking at the real estate ad that they had online when the Dope Players sold this property, shows a picture of the property, and then on facts and features, it says, "Type: Mobile, manufactured, 1984."
It was also advertised as a...
And it's a, it's a three C's, and nobody has lived in this year round.
Would you have a copy of that you could give to the board?
Can I, can I show you my phone?
Oh.
I don't have a copy of it. I have it on my telephone.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Has, has anybody on the board here asked for the skirt to be removed so they can confirm trailer with axles and no foundation?
I don't know if we're allowed to do that, actually.
Okay, I don't know if we can have...
Joe Problem, Joe Problem, removing the skirt and showing these people. I'll let my lawyer do all the, or counsel do all the talking.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think stipulated that there's no foundation and that this is footings and wood.
Yeah.
So I don't think, I don't think those facts are in question.
He even acknowledged there was still a partial chassis under it.
Again, we're not disputing how the structure came to be. Our point is that, in its current configuration, it's a residential structure within the meaning of the statute. Nobody has to love how this came to be. We get that. We're not the ones who built it. We are the ones who bought it. No one has to be thrilled with whether it had building permits or not, but nonetheless, it is a residential structure. People do live in it. It's got heating, it's got air conditioning, it's got a mailbox, and it can stay that way indefinitely. You know, our point again is, it's not so much how it came to be, is it eligible for this type of a special permit? It's a residential structure. I honestly don't see how you can't find that it's not a residential structure, used for residential purposes, allowed to stay there indefinitely. That, you know, that stage of the analysis, I think, is fairly straightforward. Question of whether you can find that it's not substantially more detrimental, I think, is actually the one that's really dramatic to the board.
Sir, do you have...
That's part of it?
Mobile, manufactured, 1984. Like I said, they've been down here 58 years.
All right, I'm just going to hang on to it for the record. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Ma'am?
Yes, my name is Marilyn Closer, and I'm the only abbot with the flags that we share common borderline. And looking over the, I hope I have this correct, ma'am. I'm questioning the, it's an RA zone, isn't it?
Yes.
Is that rural agriculture?
Correct.
And what is the boundary between property, between structures, or from the structure to the boundary line that we share? What is the normal footage?
25 feet.
25?
Yes.
Okay. And I notice on this, they were going to 15 feet, and that's being approved by the discord?
It's being discussed.
Yes?
No, it's being discussed, yeah.
The people who, one group of property owners that the flags now have, put up a fence, and they put it on the property that my husband and I own now. This is many years ago. But they put it on, the people who owned it knew that it was on their property. However, we were not, we're not aware of that when we purchased property, my husband and I. Now, it looks as though this area to the right, if you're looking down, it's a sloped, a sloped landscape. So the water comes from up by the road, Huff Road, and it runs down toward the waterfront. If, if you had a...
Actually, we did a site visit about a year ago.
I'm sorry?
We did a site visit about a year ago and saw that...
Oh, were you there? Yes.
Yes, I think we were all there except maybe Jim.
Yes, okay. Now, the property, that fence is on our property. And we will probably, I'm waiting to have surveyors, I have made an appointment, to have a surveyor come down and survey the whole road. But I noticed here on their construction of a driveway, whether it be a dark asphalt black or whether it be a cement, that crosses into the public right-of-way on the right here. It crosses over to that. Now, I believe the town of Douglas, I was told, does not own that right-of-way. Is that correct?
I think it says it's unknown owner.
They have authority. Yeah, they put it unknown, but I can show you a utility map. I don't have it with me. I'll be glad to get a copy of it. That cement on the driveway, no other people in that area have a full, long driveway like that. And usually, it's because of the runoff from the top. That concrete driveway, whether they make it a black asphalt or whether it's a cement, is right on the line, comes out of that garage, and it goes right to our property line. There's no footage shown. And it also shows that they are extending that driveway into the public right-of-way. Does that mean your board is approving them to make changes on property that they don't own?
No.
Or are you just, you know, are you giving approval or...
Yeah, right, at this moment, everything's just being considered. Nothing's been approved, and if it was, if it was approved, a condition could be that they couldn't put that driveway over that property that's claimed to be unknown.
I see, okay. And the other one is, it's right on the common boundary line of the flags and our own property there. Now, also, most of the people in that area are pretty familiar with tradition, and it was always known that you could never, you would never knock down the whole building because you wouldn't get an approval to renovate unless you had somehow that original structure still existing. The original structure burned, so it's not there. And another owner put the trailer up, which we were talking about. That's something I concern. My concern is that hardtop goes right to my boundary. And I have a surface welder. Has this information gone to the Board of Health yet?
It has not.
No, it has not.
No. When does it go?
You'd have to get Board of Health approval prior to getting a building permit.
Okay, so when the, the president, Mr. Flag, goes up to get a permit, that's when the board would help?
Right. He'd have to submit it, what he wants to do, septic-wise, and then it would go to the Board of Health.
Okay.
So that really isn't part of the zoning. That would be definitely a Board of Health issue.
But the other part where their driveway, it's very long, and there's quite a bit of area there, which will be all hardtop, either hardtop, black hardtop or cement. This is going to be a runoff from all that hardtop down, and it could go into our well, our only water source area.
Yeah, it looks like...
You see, I don't know if I have the screen on.
Yeah, it looks like you...
They've extended that driveway to go into that public right-of-way.
Yeah.
That public right-of-way, as traditionally been said, that those homes that are not on the waterfront, those public right-of-ways give them access to a lake, whether to put a bow in or whether to have kids go swimming. But what, why does the, what right does the, do the flags have to extend their driveway over into the right-of-way? It almost goes over to Parker Street, Parker Road.
All right, ten minutes.
Did you see?
Yeah.
It didn't.
He's just going to answer.
If I may, if I can go back, Mrs. Closer may have mentioned about the fence.
Yeah, you just need to introduce yourself for the minute.
I'm sorry, Kevin Quinn with Quinn Engineering. I'm the engineer for the board. The fence between Mrs. Closer's property and the flag's property, it's, was surveyed, it's right on the property line. So what she said is not incorrect. The fence is right on the property.
Okay.
She would like to have that checked, and I would encourage that.
We addressed that at the last meeting.
And the driveway does cross into Old Parker Road, but entering a public right-of-way or right-of-way is necessary for vehicles to access.
I'll just interrupt you, Kevin. I'm sorry. The deed to this property states that this, this property has rights to Old Parker Road, just like many others do as well.
Right.
And, you know, it's a little bit, if you're on the ground here, Old Parker Road just looks like lawn to this property. The driveway that's shown here is the same way that vehicles have accessed this property for decades. It just looks like it's coming off of the travel way of what is Parker Court, but it's the same access area. So just...
Just to help you a little bit with this, I think our only jurisdiction is within the property bounds of this property, as far as what Old Parker Road is. We want it approved or not approved, or it goes on with that. That's not before us anyways, and we have no jurisdiction over it.
Yep. I figured that.
Second question that she had was about, so I looked at that, the elevation. It does run down towards the property line, and the concrete goes right up. What do you propose for your stormwater management?
We could certainly grade the driveway to ensure that runoff is, pushes away from Mrs. Closer's property. The existing driver, there is an existing driver there. It's not, it's in the same, similar location as this.
It's a gravel driver.
But it is gravel.
So it's...
We can pitch this driveway to send the water the other way. The overall grading does go down toward the, toward the line, not...
No, no, I get that. I'm familiar. I went to the property, but I'm looking at what you have here, and the resident's concern is, is probably, if I guess you're 15 feet from her well.
Understood.
So she's worried about the runoff from the stormwater, and over this past year, I'm sure he's got a headache about stormwater. It's been a big problem because of all the water that we've had. I know we had a member in the audience that also has a headache about stormwater, so it's definitely a concern.
If the board saw this to issue a decision on that, you could put a condition that runoff will be directed away from Mrs. Closer's property.
Yeah. Okay. Does that answer your question?
No, it could have been heated.
Okay. So what, what he had said was the driveway, you're concerned about the runoff coming down the driveway? He would pitch the driveway and grade it so the runoff, when it go into your property, it would go away from your property.
I point out, I understand you. When you would pitch...
So if your property's here, he's going to change the driveway so the water runs away from it.
He's going to have a house there.
The driveway...
What's that name?
His house is...
Yeah, he's got 15 feet of property between the lot line and the house, so he could make some type of a swell to...
Now, you said that has been surveyed. It was somebody from, I don't know if it was the zoning board or the Board of Appeals, when you went down to visit, I said, I guess you were there?
Yeah, we were all there.
Somebody came to me, and they were talking about the fence, and they had, the flags had already had it surveyed. And they came and said, "Well," and I said, "We didn't put that fence there." And they said, "Well, you own it now." Could you just say, "We, that is not the correct boundary line?"
The boundary, the property, the fence is on the property line, ma'am. It's on the property. It runs right along the property. I would assume whoever installed the fence, and I don't know who's installed it, probably had it surveyed to ensure that they put the fence on the property.
Oh, I'm not so sure. I've been down there in the area for about 70 years, and no one has ever come down and said that was the...
We have, we have a stamp plan here, you have a copy of it, stamped by a registered surveyor, that the fence is in fact on the property line. So we're not in a position to...
What do you mean? It's not on the property?
That it is on the property.
It is on the property.
It's right on the property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, I'm having it surveyed to verify that myself.
Yeah, no, you're certainly welcome to do that, but we can, we have a stamp... Yeah, no, you're certainly welcome to do that, but we can, we have a stamp plan, we can't dispute that. We don't have.
They need a stamp plan.
The plan is stamped right here by a surveyor, and it shows the fence right on the property line. So the surveyor's willing to put his license on the line to say it's on the property line. I think we have to accept that. You're certainly welcome to challenge it.
Chair, just to get back to the driveway issue, we're perfectly happy with the condition regarding the pitch of the driveway. That makes good sense. It probably makes even better sense for our own property, but it makes good sense here. That's a perfectly reasonable condition. You know, it's one of the benefits of, again, having a special permit process for this, rather than just being able to do it as a right, than the footprint rebuild, is that, you know, these types of conditions can be put in place to benefit the neighbors.
Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak?
I have a question as far as residential structure.
You just need to identify yourself for the minute taken.
Norman Wilson, 36 Main Street.
Okay.
And Raptin, and 11 Huff Road in Douglas. The issue here is the residential structure, am I right? Is that the biggest, kind of, trying to understand as far as?
There are concerns whether or not it is a residential structure, was a, at one point, maybe still is a mobile home.
Correct. So in the bylaws, what are we, apples to oranges, orange, you know, I'm just trying to understand what defines a residential home. Is it, is it because it needs a foundation that it's been there? Because obviously, this doesn't have a foundation. It has cement pilings, which is something like a deck would have. So understanding, is it a four-season home? Is it three-season? And I'm just trying to understand the process of what you're trying to determine.
Through the chair, if I may, again, I researched it. I don't find that specific term residential structure, as it is used in both bylaw and the zoning act, is defined. The closest I could get is by the court cases that I provided, that look at non-traditional structures, and the one I found, a purpose that wasn't for season, wasn't for year-round use, was found to be a residential structure for purposes of the zoning act and a very similar bylaw. So I think that's the closest authority you may get, but you'll search and vain for a specific definition of residential structure in the case that I found, in either the bylaw or elsewhere.
Okay. Thank you. Ma'am?
I heard you say that the Old Parker Road is not under your jurisdiction.
Right.
So what is to prevent the encroachment on that? Whose jurisdiction is that under?
I guess it would be a civil matter.
That's correct. They're private roads, so it wouldn't fall under the town's jurisdiction.
The land court or the superior court would have jurisdiction over an alleged trespass.
So you need to have, if you have a deed that says you have rights to that area, then it's a personal matter versus the town's. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. If, if a private individual believes that another private individual is infringing upon their rights, that's a civil matter between two private parties that could be addressed through the courts.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else? Ma'am?
I've looked at a utility map, and it shows that property is going down, as a public right-of-way. There's another one, a few houses down, heading in the other direction, with people from the back or whatever, if they're renting or they own it. They can use that as their access to the waterfront. And this is also, and the utility map was described as a right-of-way. That, I, and what you seem to be saying is, whoever wants to go in there and put something up, they become owner of it?
No, no, we didn't say that at all.
Okay.
But we're, we can only deal with what's in the four lot lines, you know, and that's outside of it. It says on here that the owner is unknown, and if people have rights to it and they can prove it, I would guess that they hope that the applicant would work with you. But we, the zoning board doesn't have any stay over Old Parker Road.
Okay, the town of Douglas doesn't own it, right?
It says on here that the owner is unknown.
Okay, on here.
It's.
This is a recent map. I've looked at older maps, utility maps, from the utility company, and it says it's a public right-of-way.
Okay.
Doesn't say it's owned by the town of Douglas. And it's access. Now, there's a lot of land up there that's going to be developed with homes, and they'll go up public Parker Road and probably is the Oak Street that goes off.
Yes.
Up, up the hill. There'll be a lot of new homes in that area. There's an awful lot of land. Now, my understanding, as a public right-of-way, all of those homes would have access to the waterfront. But if a private owner, like the flags, put up, what they have in there is a cement. Who owned it? What if, do they become owner, they're changing that area called the public right-of-way, they're making changes to property they don't own.
Well, I would.
And then, if it, does that mean they now will become owners of a small strip of hardtop?
I don't believe so, but I'm not an attorney, and it's really not a ZBA issue.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Kevin Quinn with Quinn Engineering. There's two things I want to point out to Mrs. Klosick. The existing structure does encroach into that right-of-way. This proposed plan cures that. That encroachment is remedied with this plan. Secondly, there's an existing driveway in Old Parker Road, and we're supposed to use a new driveway, but in no way does anybody impede access over the Old Parker right-of-way.
The grade will stay the same, so you can drive across it just like.
Any access anyone wants is unimpeded by anything we're talking about.
And to follow up on that, if anyone had lake access rights over Old Parker Road in this area, our driveway would have no impact on that whatsoever. They would go right down old, regular Parker Road to Parker Court and turn down what essentially looks like Mr. Flag's lawn, but it isn't. There's a strayway right through there. This driveway would have absolutely no impact on that whatsoever, any more than the current access does right now.
Okay.
And again, we're moving the existing residential structure out of that area, which, you know, helps secure the encroachment.
Anybody else?
So does that mean that the flags do not own the public right-of-way, can make changes to property they don't own by putting in hardtop, starting part of their driveway will be on that public right-of-way?
Yeah, we.
And the flags aren't paying any taxes on it. They don't own it. So why should they have, have the ability to put a hardtop in?
Yeah, I don't believe that's a zoning issue, unfortunately. I hear what you're saying, but.
Well, we don't have the ability to control it, is what it comes down to. It's a private road. If you look at the assessor's map, it shows Old Parker Road going down to where the old dam was, which is now all grass that's grown in there as moat.
Well, it shows Parker Road squaring off into the homes with a campground.
I know what I looked at today, and it showed Old Parker Road going right down to the water. So, and I purposely looked it up because I wanted to see if there was a deed associated with it, so I could understand who owns it, right? Because on this map, it says undetermined, and they ran into the same roadblock that I wrote, ran into. It's just a private road that's untaxed. It's, it's jointly owned by everybody in that neighborhood, if.
But the flags are going to put a section of their driveway on it.
Yeah, but that's, again.
And you're saying, anybody could have done that?
Well, I hear what you're saying, but it's really not a zoning issue. We don't have any control over that strip of land, and if they choose to do that, they'll have to deal with the people who say they have rights over it. I don't know, it's not a zoning issue.
Not a zoning.
Jim?
We're talking about whether this is a home or a mobile home.
Right.
Or a camp or, or any of that stuff. And, you know, we're talking about the law and all that stuff, but is there anything in the law that says it isn't a home? I mean.
Oh, there's, in other words, did I find any cases to contradict?
To say that this is not a home at this point?
I, I did the same search that counsel did, and I did not come up with any contrary cases. And as I stated previously, his characterizations of the cases he is citing are accurate. The only slight nuance being those were cottage, and those were approvals that were challenged by parties who felt they were aggrieved by the approval. So that interpretation, if you will, has a certain amount of momentum when it gets reviewed in court. The court's not reviewing that necessarily de novo, as if they're starting from scratch, but, but the characterizations of the cases are correct. In particular, the first case that counsel cites, the reasoning the appeals court uses is Black's Law Dictionary. So I, I feel that the extrapolation that counsel's put before the court is fair and accurate.
All right.
You will allow the flags to place a park car on that extended driveway that goes over toward Parker Road. In fact, it hooks right into Parker Road.
Yep.
Will that allow them to prevent other people from going and trying to get down the, either the pit or to swim?
This is really asking for legal advice.
Yeah.
So we have no more jurisdiction over that Old Parker Road than we do your driveway. So if he parks in your driveway, that becomes a civil matter for you, the same as the Old Parker Road, because it's a private road. That has nothing to do with us. All we're talking about today is within the boundaries of his property of what he wants to do in there. That's all we're going to talk about. That's all we can talk about.
Okay. But that part of, there, the part that connects to Parker Road or the public right-of-way, they're putting a hardtop.
Excuse me, ma'am. I just explained it. We have no jurisdiction over that. We're not going to talk about Old Parker Road because we have nothing to do with it. We can't control it. That's a private road. So all we're going to talk about is what's in the confines of his property. That's all we can talk about. If I'm incorrect, town council.
Mr., no, Ms. Patrick, you're, you're correct.
Right. So, and I'm not trying to be rude to you, ma'am, but we can't keep going. We, we did this at the last meeting too, and we're all getting frustrated. We're going in circles, and I don't want to be disrespectful to you, but we can't talk about what's outside his property because we have no jurisdiction over it.
So any one of us owners who are surrounding the property, who have been there, let's say 20 to 60 years.
I'm going to answer this last question for you. Go ahead.
Okay. Do they, anybody could have gone and hardtoped that and used it for some other reason?
It has nothing to do with the town. So if you want to, you want to hardtop it and you get challenged by your neighbors, then that, you would be going on your own.
Expense.
Expense.
And risk.
And liability and risk. So we don't have any jurisdiction over that. We're all done with talking about Parker Road. I'm not trying to be rude, but we're going to get back to his property.
Ma'am?
Charlene LaChapelle, 156 Parker Road. If the issue seems to be whether or not this is a trailer, still within the confines of this overbuild, wouldn't it simply be the easiest thing to do is to go and lift the skirt and see if the wheels are still there?
It's not, it's not a case, do you mind if I answer?
No, go ahead.
It's not a case of whether or not it's a trailer. I, I think we've all come to the conclusion that at one point in its life, it was a trailer. Okay? I, I think we all know that. The question that I have, right, and it's probably before the board, and counsel has explained his, his point of view on it, whether or not it is a residential structure. Once that question is answered, then, then the facts of before, it's as to whether or not we grant him the relief that he's seeking to be within his setbacks, which is 25 feet around. He's going to be six feet on one side, 15 on the other side. So that's the challenge before the board today.
Yes.
We're going to go round and round with the same thing, the same questions. So I think we've only got a couple, a couple of questions here. So everybody understands what they are, so we just have to come to a conclusion as to where we feel comfortable.
His driveway isn't even one foot from the boundary near my, near my.
You're, you're, you're allowed to bring a driveway right up to the boundary. So yes, you are. So the, the concern that you would have with a driveway up to the boundary is where your stormwater would go to, and he's already addressed that, that he would pitch the property, pitch the driveway, create a swell, which is just a little indent going down the side of the house that would channel the water away from your property. Okay? So he's addressed that portion of it? Yep? No, he's addressed it. Sorry.
No problem. Anybody else? Does the board like to close the public hearing?
Before we close the public hearing, I just, in fairness to the applicant, I'm still unsure whether or not this is a structure in my mind. So if I'm forced to make a decision, I'm going to go on the side of caution. So I don't know how to prove whether or not it's a residential structure, and I don't think I've been satisfied with that tonight. So the, the rest of it is pretty straightforward, right? That's the one hangup that I have, and I'm just, out of fairness to you, I'm trying to figure out how to get there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
I wanted to know that, and I work with a lot of zoning boards and appeals in other communities. I know there's often a concern among those ZBA members that we're setting precedent. Is this something that's going to come back to bite us? Is this something that we have to worry about with other properties? And I just, you know, from my perspective, it's not. You're never going to find a more unique residential structure than this. I don't think you'll find a comparable example, but you're always within the facts you have before you. It's like precedent, and whether you can find, you know, that this particular structure is residential structure for purposes of the bylaw and the zoning act, I mean, I think you can believe yourselves in this, in this case.
Speaking for myself, I don't believe in precedents. Each case is an independent case. They all bring their own unique situations to it. For whatever reason, I'm still hung up on the fact that it was, it was a camping trailer, travel trailer. It's been referenced as a mobile home. It's not a manufactured home. It's a, so.
And I'd also know, if, if the board can't find that it's a residential structure and doesn't find that it has jurisdiction, and we say, okay, that's it, then this just stays there indefinitely. It gets improved within its footprint, but it just stays there indefinitely. It's not going anywhere. And quite honestly, the property's not getting improved at all. I know, I think that's something that I would offer the board to look at is, what's, what's the best for the property and for the neighborhood overall? Is it to leave that there indefinitely with minor improvements, with very little incentive from Mr. Flag to do a whole heck of a lot with it, with minor improvements, and maybe rent it out, or to have a new home there that's better located and is overall better for the neighborhood?
Not disputing anything you said. I still have the same problem. Trying to get my head around whether or not it's a actual residential structure. That, that's all it is. That, that's the only stumbling block that I have.
Hang on, I have a question.
Yes, Ronnie?
If he had not put a trailer there, and was, it was an old shack that was there before, and he patched that up, then there wouldn't be any problems. So I've, I've got a problem where the, where's the bump in the, you know, was there, was there a building there before, before he put the trailer there?
Yeah, it burnt.
And it burnt?
Well, many. Well, many, many years prior...
Yeah, okay. So then I'm playing a thought that hasn't come out. So instead of building the thing up, he said, okay, I got X number of dollars, I'm gonna put a trailer there for now, and then when time becomes available, I wanna build. That's the way I'm looking at it.
I have to say... Go ahead.
No, that makes sense to me that...
I'm not totally convinced that it's a residential structure, a single family.
Yeah, but it was at one time when it burned.
Yeah, but when it burns, you have three years to replace it.
Oh.
And it burnt about 30 years prior.
And they got past that because they...
They put the trailer...
Somebody got creative, right? So and you... They made it through the 10-year period, but now it's a pre-existing non-conforming something, right? So trying to figure out whether or not it's an actual falling under the zoning bylaw and reconstruction of a residential home. Is it a residential home?
But there's nothing in the law that says it's not, is correct?
I don't know. Nobody showed me either way.
The challenge...
Exactly. Nobody showed me either way. So that's why you can't make a decision.
Right. Yeah, the challenge of the case, right, is that the bylaw, well, it defines structure, does not define residential structure. The zoning act does not define residential structure.
So structure is defined by somebody... Something that provides shelter, correct? Okay. We've had this conversation about porches. That's why I even brought up, and I picked on a building commissioner. So if I put up a blue top and I get away with it for 10 years, and my back... I'm being a hypothetical jerk, right? So I get away with it for 10 years, and I call that a... That's my residential home in the back. I can build... I should be able to go get a permit and reconstruct or alter my blue top and end up with two houses on my property if nobody catches me for 10 years.
Well, I should point out...
Is it a little far-fetched? I get it, but...
Well, you're right. The definition of structure in the bylaw, I'm just gonna read it into the record, "A combination of materials assembled at a fixed location to give support or shelter, such as a building, framework, retaining wall, tent, reviewing stand, platform..."
There we go.
"...thin fence..."
There's my loophole.
"...sign, placal, recreational tramway, mast for radio antenna or the like." It's pretty wide. Structure, it's not residential structure. Structure.
Right.
If I may, while we're reading definitions...
Sure.
This is in my memo, but I'll read it into the record anyway. The closest I could find to a definition of a residential structure in the zoning bylaw is when we get into what is a dwelling. And it's in Section 10 definitions, a dwelling, "A building designed and occupied is living quarters for one or more families. Single-two-family dwellings shall be designed for and occupied by not more than one or two families respectively. A multifamily dwelling shall be designed for and occupied by three or more families. Foundation and method of construction are nowhere in there." Again, that's not the definition of residential structure, but it is the definition of what a single-family dwelling is. And again, you find nothing about the method of construction, whether it has a foundation, how it came to be. And that's the closest I could find in our zoning bylaw.
Yeah. But a single-family residential structure doesn't typically have an axle.
But it doesn't say it in there.
It doesn't. I don't disagree with that. Again, you could not extract a trailer from this property at this point. Let me do wheel this off. It has been gutted within. The envelope that was built around it is there structurally. Walls have come down. There's not a whole lot left beyond just the frame that was underneath the original floor, which now has a new floor on top of it. It's weird. This is a bizarre structure. But I think for purposes of your bylaw and this special permit process, I think you can easily find that it's a residential structure. It's a home. It's livable year-round, and it's going to stay there indefinitely, whether the board votes on the special permit or not, because it's in enforcement, and it is a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Nobody's disputing the fact that it can stay there indefinitely. That's obvious.
Ken?
I can attest to the fact that whether it was a trailer mortified to the point of sad or what it is, there's never been a permit moved for any of them up there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's amazing.
John, did you have something?
Yeah, and just to bring up the old stuff over here is, the only permit that was ever given on this property was in 1961 to build that cottage. 1961. And if I remember correctly, I gave the documents to Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
And since then, you gotta think, nobody said anything. Is there pylons in the ground or anything like that? And one other thing is, Pete is called, I could probably name three or four places, that we approved a living space in an IRA that was a shed, had two windows and a door, no toilet, no kitchen. Some didn't even have electricity. Now, not necessarily this board did that, but it is known in the town for doing so. A shed 12 by 15, 12 by 10, 12 by 8, it has happened.
In the last 10 or 11 years, isn't it?
It appears that you don't have the votes to... You need to get this approved. I'd be willing to give you another extension if you want to try to convince that that is a single family or whatever. I just... I mean, the pictures show a trailer, you know? And whether it's been mortified or not is...
Well, let me try and do sidebar here on live cable. I understand, and I can count noses as well as anybody. You know, we're happy to continue it, you know, rather than take a denial. I, again, the hangups folks have with how this was construction, I understand no one's happy with how this came to be. We're not really thrilled with how it came to be because it's put us in this situation. But if you know it's gonna stay there indefinitely, why would you prefer that to what we're proposing? I would think the board will be able to get around the fact someone lives there, stays indefinitely, it's gonna be somebody's home indefinitely. If that's true, why would you not prefer to see the property improved rather than seeing that there indefinitely? To me, that would seem to be able to motivate the board to hold its nose, make a finding. We don't love it, but for purposes of this special permit, we'll call it a residential structure because it'll improve the property and we'll move on, and hopefully we won't see one of these in time soon. I would think the board will be able to make that decision, even if they don't love it, even though they don't like the way it came to be, that if this is overall a better thing for the neighborhood and a better thing for the town, certainly a better thing for its property, why would you not be able to address it and say, we don't love it, but for purposes of this bylaw and purposes of the zoning act and this unique special permit process, we're gonna say, fine, that's a residential structure, and we're gonna go with an improvement to the property. That, to me, is, I think, perceived as well as hard to understand. Why would you rather leave the status quo there than to see it improved?
Well, might encourage other people to do the same.
Encourage other people to...
To do... To put a trailer on the property or put up a tent or whatever, then 10 years later, say, well, now we want to improve it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, again, Kevin Quinney's...
Yep.
That's a matter of enforcement. I mean, if it wasn't enforced 40 years ago, that's unfortunate. But the town has staff now, and that's their task. Certainly, if somebody puts up some standard structure, stops living there, I think the neighbors have a right to expect that to be enforced.
Dan, Ron had something.
Ron? My question is, where is the main beef here? The thing... It's a big improvement for the neighborhood. I just can't wrap my head around that this... Let's call it what it is. Is it just a mess there now? And he's improving it. I'd like to know if you could ask the people that are neighbors, what's their rub about? I can't follow it.
So getting back to what I said earlier on...
Yeah, okay.
This gentleman over here doesn't understand why I couldn't emotionally make a decision. It's that sort of thing. It has nothing to do with emotion. It has nothing to do with what I think it should be or whatever. I need to base my decision on some factual information. The challenge that I have, and I stated it right from the very beginning, is whether or not this is actually a residential structure, right? I'm not totally convinced of that. So it's not a case of whether it's gonna improve the neighborhood or not improve the neighborhood or any of that. I'm not disputing any of that. I need to be able to stand behind my decision and say, yes, I made a decision based on XX and X, not, well, I thought it would be the right thing to do, so that's what I did. I personally don't operate that way. I just like to make sure that I make a good and fair decision, fair to you, fair to your neighbors, fair to everybody that comes before us in the future, right? And try to be fair and consistent. That's all I try to do. So I think it's in your best interest to continue it for another month, and maybe we can figure it out. I'm trying to do what I can to come up with that answer for myself, right? Your explanation, no disrespect, is more of an emotional thing. That doesn't help me get to a factual thing, right? I'm looking at what I see, and your comparison with the case law refers to a cottage, this is a mobile home. I still, it's apples and oranges. I'm not totally convinced that it justifies that. I could be wrong. I'm not a lawyer. I'm just trying to help you understand where my head's at, right? So...
Through the chair.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Oh, sorry.
One second, John. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead. Counsel, go ahead.
I know many members of the board. I don't know if it was total overlap on the board from the last time Mr. Fley was on the board, 12 years ago, when there was a site visit. Does the board think it would be helpful to have a site visit to get out there and look at the property again?
I personally, I've been on the board since 2013, so I was there on the last one. I remember.
I was as well. Ron was there.
I think...
I've been there.
Jim?
John was there.
He just wasn't there on the site visit, but he's been there.
I was out there before the last meeting.
Yeah, looking at... I know what's at...
Can I make this interesting, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, John. I didn't hear what you said.
Okay. So I would like, I mean, my personal opinion, continue this and sit down and talk to counsel in regards to the consequences at the very end of this.
I think the...
That would be my way of thinking.
What, the consequences?
But the burden is on the applicant, John, to prove that it's a single family, a structure. The pictures that came from the assessor's office clearly show a travel trailer. It's not even a mobile home. It's a travel trailer. Or was, you know?
It was. It now has a permanent roof, four concrete footings, four deck. Central heating has been essentially gutted inside. God bless the person who did this, which they had gotten a building apartment, but they didn't. But they have taken something that may have been a camper or a mobile home and turned it into something that's clearly not. I don't think you can go out there and say, this is definitely a mobile home when I'm looking at it. I understand you can still see pieces of it from the outside, and it is there, in there, underneath that superstructure. But that, this isn't a residential structure. It is a structure that people live in year-round or could live in there year-round. You have no other definitions for what a residential structure is. You know, we're working to prove a negative. You know, again, we're happy to continue, happy to provide additional information.
Okay.
If you want to do a site visit, I think that would be perfectly fine, not just to see the site, but perhaps to see the building itself. You know, that's certainly something that we're willing to do.
I don't think anything's changed, has it, since we were there a year ago, a year and a half ago? So every member's been there.
When I look at the pictures of the trailer that was there originally and what it is now, the configuration of the windows, the doors, the jogs, and everything is still the same. So basically, they built a roof over the top of it and vinyl sided. That's what I see. So that's where I'm struggling to identify this as a residential structure that we could grant the relief for the alteration.
Steve Plank's of the applicant here. So Mike, call it the last ditch effort, unless we're taking about continuing proving that it is a residential structure, is it is built 30, 40 years ago, it is falling down. It needs to be rebuilt. I mean, maybe if I went to the building inspector and just built right there, he'll probably say, no, because the zoning board says, well, it's up to the zoning board. So I'm gonna be stuck between a rock and a hard place. So, I mean, if he'd let me build right there where it's at, I mean, that's kinda crazy. I'd rather go back and, of course. What we're trying to do here, without going into Parker Road, out of Parker Road, we went through all that, but if I can live there forever indefinitely, why can't I rebuild where it is right there? Maybe he can comment on that, and I'll go down that road.
Well, you couldn't rebuild where you're at because it encroaches your property line. So you'd have to cut a little piece off, but no. But I'm not trying to give you a high time. You said something, so it's no different... The answer to you was no different than this woman over here with the driveway, right? We have no jurisdiction out on Parker Road. So she couldn't give you a permit to build on Parker Road. So he wouldn't be able to let you rebuild in the exact same footprint.
So...
Anyway, that's all hypothetical. We're still back to the same thing, right? And he would still be challenged with the same problem. I'm gonna assume that, does he consider it a residential structure that you could do that?
So I just leave it alone, let it fall down on me? I mean, there's gotta be some... You know what I mean? I mean, if your house is falling down, you gotta get approval to get it repaired.
I can appreciate your frustration. So the suggestion to you was to... Through your counsel...
Sure.
Was to continue this for another month to give your side time to try to...
Well, he did some extensive research and came up with his, I thought, a reasonable reason to make a legal decision on the matter.
Yeah, and I think I was pretty clear in explaining my side of it as to, I'm having trouble... I'm struggling with the fact that it's a residential structure, and I don't think I'm out of line in being unreasonable with the fact that suggesting that you should continue it for another month to give time... I'm looking at it at the same time myself, and I don't need to. This is a volunteer position, but I want to...
And I appreciate you guys...
I like to make a good decision, right? A good decision that's gonna benefit you and benefit your neighbors at the same time. I can't just say, yeah, go ahead and do it, because I think it's gonna look nicer. I haven't done that the entire time I've been on the board.
One wants to make a difference. Take the month.
I think we need either vote or continue it at this point.
We'll look to continue to your next meeting.
Okay. Here's a form just to fill out.
For the record, I understand it's frustrating. I'm just trying to get my head around it.
So the applicant is looking for a continuance for one day... Of one month to our January meeting? We should probably... Someone would want to make a motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion to...
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Forgit, seconded by Mr. Palmer.
That'll be...
Public hearing will be continued to...
January 3rd.
January 3rd at 7:00 PM.
No, put it at 7:15 because the first continuance is for the 7:00...
Okay, 7:15.
For Northwest Main Street. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am. We're not gonna take anything else on this because it's continued until the next meeting.
I just wanted to give you a little information.
You know what? We just closed the hearing, you know, so...
You know, I was... I know the house that originally burned down, and I was in it. And the way they placed the trailer was not the location where the house burned down.
That has nothing to do with it. That has nothing to do with it.
No, I agree. So you're welcome to come back on the 3rd of January. Okay, Mr. Palmer will be back in a minute. He just left the room for a moment.
Sure.
He'll come back on January 3rd.
Plug that in right now. That little boy's room, so we'll wait for him.
The little boy's room.
Nobody, nobody's a big boy around here?
Well, you know.
I let a secret out.
Oh, well, you know, you leave. Do you guys think you get done and you go? How about that, right?
Okay.
Lydia, can't leave.
All right, so the next agenda item is public hearing for Linda Noon's, case number 2023-2141, Ledstone Drive. The date of the application was November 15th.
I'm listening.
The following was, following was posted in the town hall and also published in the Worcester Telegram Gazette, and it read as follows. "The Town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:15. Linda Noon's is requesting a special permit in an RA Zone District pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Douglas Zoning Bylaws, Section 9.3 and Section 3.4.3, nonconforming structures to reconstruct a single-family home on a pre-existing nonconforming lot on property located at 41 Ledstone Drive, Assessor's Map 102, Parcel 8. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Massachusetts." Okay. Hearing tonight's case will be Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Forgit, Mr. Bombara, and myself. The applicant or representative here?
We have a smiley representative.
For the record, Margaret Bacon, Allen Engineering and Associates.
Okay.
Also here tonight is the owner-applicant, Linda Noon. She's zooming in from California.
Okay.
So if we have any specific questions that I can't answer, she'll chime in. So this is an existing, pre-existing nonconforming lot, 41 Ledwood. And just to kind of get your bearings, I, this is from the town's assessors. Here's the parcel right here, two and a half acres with an existing cottage, and it is accessed through a right-of-way. If I zoom out a little farther there, just to get your bearings. Here's, here's the lot, Manchog Pond. The pink is the right-of-way, and then the yellow is Ledstone Road, which is a private road. And up here is West Street. So you can see there's quite a difference from the West Street up here down to the lot, okay?
Excuse me, Margaret, that's northwest?
Northwest Main Street.
Okay, all right. Just to confirm.
And then you can see from this initial loan-up area that there's already one, two, three, four houses that access off of this existing right-of-way along with the cottage. There is an existing cottage on that parcel, okay? So we've already been through the Conservation Commission and the Board of Health. So, so just for your review, Manchog Pond right here, appears like the peninsula. Here's the existing cottage that's going to be raised. What she plans on doing is building a larger A-frame, three-bedroom house here that meets all the zoning setbacks, meets the conservation setbacks, and then septic's over here, because it is all ledge down there. There's only very few places we could actually find suitable percoals. So ConCom approved, Board of Health approved, and because this lot has no frontage, then that's when we realized that we needed a special permit from the zoning board. And, so, yeah, so here's, we started off with a typical, you know, A-frame, which kind of lends itself to that type of environment, and right now Stephen Dix is in the process of preparing a full set of plans. And so actually, so right now on the, on the design plans here, we designed a 35 by 50. That actually is going to be a little smaller, which he's really going to build right now. Here's the first floor plan from Steve Dix, and it's 35 by 35 with some decks on a couple sockets. So it is a little smaller than what I have on that initial conservation plan.
But the actual home will fit in this box that's on your plan?
Yes.
That's 35 by 50?
Because in the, in the initial stages, I always tell my clients, yeah, go a little bigger, because you can always go smaller. And so she didn't really think at the time she was going to go that big buck, you know, just to make sure she could get what she wanted in that, that box. So, yeah, so the, this plan here, like I said, the foundation's 35 by 35.
Any board members have questions? This application? No?
No.
Okay. So-
So the right-of-way is basically like a common drive?
Correct. It's not very wide, but it accommodates, here's the right-of-way, one, two, yeah, three, four, common drive, pretty much, yeah, common drive. Yep, a little narrower than a common drive, but-
Yeah. They just go, all can't leave at the same time.
Right.
You can't, on the same way.
I know this plan here shows that it was approved for that subdivision back in 1990.
Yeah, and it's an existing house, isn't it? Anybody have any questions on this?
Surprisingly, no.
Everybody's questioned out.
I'm going to make Ronnie fall out of his chair.
You're going to, wait, you got to wait for, can you make a motion?
Yeah, everybody's here.
Yeah, we're here, John's online, those are, were the representatives of the last people.
Oh, okay, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
We have to close the public hearing for us?
Yeah, we do.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion by Mr. Forgit, seconded by Mr. Palmer to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is now closed.
Because of John being-
Yep. Aye, Dan Heaney.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Palmer, aye.
Ryan Forgit, aye.
Wake up, John.
John.
Oh, we got four votes.
All right, we have four votes. Okay, public hearing's now closed.
We can move into a decision.
Okay, decision-
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Can you say aye?
Yes, I did, Bombara, aye.
Okay, great. All right. So we can move into a decision, if the board would like to do that at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve the plan as presented.
For ZBA case number 2023-21?
Yeah. Okay.
I second that.
With the speculation of a new set of plans coming.
New set of plans coming for what?
Does, she just said they're making another set of plans, am I correct?
Right.
The plans are being drawn up for the house, and it's going to be, even though the main structure's 15 feet shorter, they're putting decks on the end, so they'll still be in the same envelope that they're presenting.
Okay, all right.
Yep, exactly.
You're there on that.
Right, yeah, they submitted a, their proposal has a 35 by 50-foot box, John, and the plan's being redrawn, but it's going to fit in that box, so if we approve it as it's drawn, we'll be all set.
All right, sounds good.
Okay.
Hi, Margaret.
All right, so-
Motion-
We have a motion by Mr. Forgit, seconded by Mr. Palmer, to approve as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Dan Heaney.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Palmer, aye.
Ryan Forgit, aye.
Bombara, aye.
All right, yeah, request is approved unanimously. We will get a draft decision, I mean, decision drafted up and as quickly as we can, it's been taking about a month. We're having decisions drawn by, drawn up by counsel and turnaround time's about a month.
All right, so once you get the decision, then you have to wait another 20 days?
20 days.
Right.
Yeah, okay, well, it's winter time, so I don't think she plans on doing anything right away, but-
Okay.
No.
All right, great.
Good luck, John.
I'm good, I appreciate everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy California.
Yeah, I'm moving back, I grew up there, and now I'm moving back.
Good for you.
Yep, good for you.
Okay, thank you, board.
All right.
Thank you, Margaret.
See you next month.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we do have, do have some bills here that need to be signed.
Give them to Ronnie, he'll pay it.
Well, that's being done, Ken, can you just run down on, on-
North Brown.
Paul Brown.
Matter of fact, I drove up there today, yesterday, sorry, I should, take a run around, take a look. There's a couple of the storm cells which are mentioned in the report that are not raining good. I haven't had a chance to talk to Neil Roy Bickie with regards to that and find out the status of it. I don't think that there's much they want to really tackle with that, being out of the growing season to try and reestablish the bottoms in them. But I'm concerned that they keep an eye on them. It's in the same area that they had a problem with units 33 and 31, they had some flooding there. That actually went in the basement at one time from one of the storm cells.
Okay.
Those two storm cells are still the same ones that are affected. I know that Nautico Way, the property being developed on the left side of Nautico Way, rain into that side to drain into the ultimate reach tension pond down the backside. So to go in and try and reestablish bottoms at this time of year, I don't know that that would be-
The ground will be frozen shortly.
They're putting the last foundation in, or gave them permit for, they're excavating the last foundation on the left side of Nautico Way. They're in the process of moving materials on the right-hand side, removing them from the site, cleaning the side up on the right, on the right-hand side, so they can continue forward with that. I just gave them two of the permits in the last 30 days, I believe it were, were also for affordable units. My understanding with having a discussion with them, the only thing left available up there right at this point is the foundation, or they're digging now, at one of the, of the foundation that they just pulled. Everything else is under agreement. So it's moving good. Still got some sediment controls to take care of going across the road, and where they've been trucking all the materials out a lot, they have a lot of sediment going down the road, so I'll get back with them with regards to that. They had a broom, sweeping broom for their bobcat up there, and make them get back after it and get that cleaned up. And it also, the report talked about reestablishing the trackout pad on the contractor entrance way. I'll get on to that, reestablish that.
Do you get asbills for your foundations?
Yes.
And they pulled off the center line of the proposed road?
Indeed, they are.
Just double-check that, because there was an issue before and how they corrected it, remember, they were cutting taping all over the place, but it is actually, it comes off the center line of the proposed location of the road, not where they put it. It could be different, so just watch that.
I think you guys have the pictures, you can see the storm cells that I'm talking He's calling them catch bases 55, 56. If you look at the, then you've got the storm cell 40 is the one that I'm talking about that previously had a problem, because that's on the main road, that that's actually house number 31 and 33, either side, so that's one side of it. Two pictures, and yet, sure, I'll save on it. Either side of that unit, the storm cells are not draining properly.
They seem to have been addressing any concerns you had better than they previously.
Yeah, they've been staying with it. They do have some lighting up now, coming in, I think they're solo lighting, they put on the granite posts. They've been missing for quite a while. I noticed yesterday when I went in there, the lights were lit up on the posts coming in. Still not happy with the maintenance they're doing with the wrap in the middle of the road, you're driving up, finding a big pile of dirt on the road.
They're not supposed, that's supposed to be taken care of, it's supposed to be grass.
Right, but definitely on the final road, we want to go on. But in the meantime, I want it to stay on top of that. Somebody gets, if they gets pinched or retired, somebody's walking down the sidewalk, it gets taken out, it's not going to be good.
I didn't catch it if you said it, on the ratio for the affordables, they're good?
They're good. They're good on the ratio. Like I said, the, two of the last permits I gave were for affordables, so.
Right, but they need to be sold in order-
I understand.
Yeah.
As far as the, the numbers of sold, I don't think they've hit 16 on that left side of Nautico Way yet anyways, but there has been some on Nautico Way that have transferred ownership already.
Yeah.
So I believe they're within it, I can double-check that also.
Did you ever check that sidewalk, the width?
Yeah, the sidewalk average is five and a half to six feet.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
So just the overgrowth that made it deceiving?
Yeah, well, you know, when it's all said and done, I want it to go by whatever that's on the drawings, and I believe the drawings said four feet, which would allow for more road width, because those roads are fairly skinny getting inside there. But I guess once they finish that road work and reestablish the center of it-
You were got right between the fence and the, for the sidewalk.
That's where it went down to five and a half, by the, by the crossover, yeah. That's where it went down to five and a half, then it opened back up to six, because I was concerned about that. So I actually measured to the fence post across to the, to the finish-
When I seen it, it was hard to tell, because of the overgrowth, bushes, weeds or whatever that's grown up.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
All right, the last agenda item is to review the minutes of our October 4th meeting. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read them or not? You have, okay. If not, we can, we can do them next month.
No, I can do this really fast.
Okay.
Ron, did you look at these minutes?
Of-
Should be in there. Octo, October 4th.
Yeah, October 4th.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Can that, um, that case for 291 South Street that got denied, they had already started building that, have they dismantled that, or?
Matter of fact, I just got a call from, I know that, I know the owner of the property's very sick, he's been in and out of hospital. I got a call from, a call from one of his representatives, I don't know if it's one of his kids or not, with regards to, "Oh, what do we have to do now?" And simply, "We have to remove it." I have not had time to get down there, nor has I, have I received a demolition permit, which doesn't surprise me, because I didn't receive a building permit. So I was going to get down there, it's going to be on my inspection list to get down there and see what the status is.
Okay.
If they're not started, I'll be sending up the, the list in 30 days to get it tore down.
Okay, all right. How do these minutes work?
I'd like to make a motion to accept that, uh, October 4th, many minutes as written.
Okay, okay, all right, we have a motion by Mr. Frazier, seconded by Mr. Forget, to approve the minutes of our October 4th meeting as written.
Hey, you mean Palmer.
You mean Palmer, not Frazier.
Oh, is that what I said?
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry.
You're Frazier? I'm not approving the minutes.
My apologies.
Because it's going to come up next month when we get the minutes again.
Yeah.
You must have been looking at them at the time.
Well, I just-
That was just a test to see if you were paying attention, John.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Forget, seconded by Mr. Palmer.
No, reverse that.
The other way around.
Reverse.
Oh, jeez. It's getting late, it's past my bedtime. Okay.
We wore you out on the first case.
Yeah, really.
It was made by Mr. Palmer.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Forget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the minutes of October 4th are approved as written. Sorry about that. All right, that's the extent of our agenda items.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Bombara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting's adjourned at 8:35.
Bye, John.
Have a great weekend.
You too.
Hopefully, hopefully it rains on that.